Alright. Ready? Okay, so this is gonna be on limits. So take a look at your first one. Okay, the most important thing that you should remember about limits is that your limits from both sides have to match for it to exist. Okay, so when you're looking at the limit as x approaches 2, remember what we would do is we would kind of like hide each side and then see if they match. So for example, if I'm trying to trace this in from the left side towards 2, draw your little line in. Okay, as I approach it this way, what's my height? 4, but then what about from the other side? 2, and so if those, or sorry, 1, so if those don't match, you would say the limit doesn't exist. Okay, then it does say to explain why, so you would put D N E because. And then remember, you would write what's the limit from the left equals and what the limit from the right equals. So it'd be x approaching 2 from the left was 4, but the limit as x approaches 2 from the right was 1. Okay, if this was a free response, it's not good enough to just say they're not equal. You have to show what each side is. So you can't just say, oh, the left and the right are the same. You would have to state what okay. Usually they're multiple. Every now and then they'll put it on the F R Q, but they haven't done. Um, okay, then next one. We want x approaching 1 of sine of f of x. So remember, when it's a composition of functions, you're gonna apply the limit to the so I'm gonna find the limit as x approaches 1 of f. And then once I find that, I'm gonna find so look at your graph. As I approach 1 from the left and the right, am I approaching the same value? From the left, what am I approaching? What about from the right? 2, does it, does this matter that there's a dot up here for limits? No, remember that closed dots don't affect limits. Okay, cuz you're, remember, when you're covering up each half of the graph, technically, you're probably covering up the dot. So my limit as I approach 2 from, uh, 1 from both sides is 2. Then I want this sign of 2, which would be answered. Okay, remember, you can only evaluate sine and cosine at your reference point. So if it's not like pi six, pi thirds, two pi thirds, if it's not one of those, you can't do it. Okay, go to number 2. This time, we want x approaching 1 on g. So as I approach 1, you would draw in your little line segment here, and then you would trace from the left and then trace from the right. Are they going to the same point? What y value? 2. Okay, now, what would the closed dot be called? Do you remember? That wouldn't be the limit, that would just be g of 1 is 2 for the closed dot. Okay, but remember that for limit, you could care less if it's an open dot or closed dot because as you're hiding those different sides of the equation, you can't even see the dot. And we don't care about the cusp. You don't care about the cusp. Where you care about the cusp is if it's asking what the slope. That's where you would say like, oh, I get it. Okay, then, uh, one more like that. We want the limit as x approaches 1 of e to the g of x. Well, then the limit is gonna jump up with the g. Cuz remember, compositions, you always plug in the middle function first. So then what was the limit as x approaches 1? Uh huh, and then that means my answer would be e to the 2. Okay, take a look at the next one. We have x approaching 1 of f of g. So my limit jumps into the middle. So I have g of the limit as x approaches 1 of f. Then remember, I'm gonna find this one first, the middle limit, and then I'll plug that into g. So if I'm looking for the limit as x approaches 1 on f, what was that limit, do you remember, up here? As I trace and as I trace, what's my y value? Oh, um, yeah, what's my y? For the middle one. 2, yeah, cuz I'm tracing in towards 2 from the left and then 2 from the right. So then I want g of 2. And then, do you guys remember, there's kind of a squirrely rule that if the middle limit exists, to plug into the outside function, it has to be connected. So in this case, go to g of 2. Is the y value connected at 2? Yes, what is it? Did I do this backwards? I think I actually, uh, when I made this worksheet, I didn't do it backwards. But it would just be 1. Okay, now let's go right next to it. This time, we're doing f of g. Okay, so we're gonna take our limit, apply it to the middle. Let's just scribble it out here. Uh, f of g, so we're applying that to the middle on g. So I want the limit as x approaches 1 on g. What's the limit on g as x approaches 1? What would my value be? Then I want f of 2 if it's connected. Is f of 2 connected? Then technically, I have to put D N E because f is disconnected. At 2. Okay, so in case you don't remember, here's the rule. The inside limit has to exist and the outside limit has to be continued. So the inside limit has to exist and the outside limit has to be connected or um, okay, two more like that. Limit is x approaches 1 of f of f of x. Well, then my limit jumps to the middle on function f. And then I'm gonna plug that result back into the same graph. So take a second, look at that. Uh, what is the middle limit as x approaches 1? 2, and then what would f of 2 be? That exists, very good, because again, that graph is disconnected, that means again. Alright, then, uh, last one here, we're doing x approaching 1 on g of g. So take a second, what would we pick for that? Think about it for a minute. What's the middle limit? Hmm, the middle limit is 2. And then I want g of 2 as long as it's connected. And then the graph is connected there. So my middle number is 2. Then I go to 2 on the graph, I'll give you the y value. All good? Questions on that at all? Alright, turn the page when you're ready. Okay, so analytic limits, remember, there are a couple ways that we just did limits from graphs. You're just looking at the left and right sides. Okay, analytic limits, you have a couple of different strategies. So the first one is to factor cancel and then also L'Hopital. Okay, so remember that factors in the denominator only that cancel, those are going to create holes. And the limit does exist. So if it factors and cancels, that limit gets fixed. But let's say you factor it and it doesn't cancel, then that's a vertical asymptote and your limit does not exist. Okay, really, you would only do this for polynomials cuz if it's like trig and stuff, it never cancels. Okay, so look at your first one. Okay, try to plug it in first. Plug in 3, what do I get on top? Okay, 9 plus 7 would be okay, 16. And then plug it in on bottom, 3 plus 1 gives me 4, 16 divided by 4 gives me 4. So remember, let me actually put this at the top. Try to plug it first. Okay, remember, that's your first strategy, is just plug it in and see what number you get. The time that you would try factor cancel is when you get 0 over 0. And do you remember the thing about like do more, remember? Okay, so if it's 0 over 0, that's when you would try. Okay, so take a look at the next one, plug in 2. 2 squared is 4, 4 minus 4 gives me 0. Then I plug in 2 on bottom, I get 0 again. That means that probably factor cancel will so I'm gonna factor the top of this by difference of perfect squares. So I'll get plus 2 and minus 2. And then on the bottom, I had a minus 2. Well, then, once you factor and cancel, whatever's left over, you just retry that same limit again. So if I try the limit here, this was as x approaches 2. Plug that in, 2 plus 2, overall, the limit is equal to 4. Okay, so remember, if it's polynomials, factor cancel is a good place to start. Take a look at the third one. Plug in 2, what do we get on the top? So 2 squared would be 4, and then what's 4 minus 9? Negative 5. But then what do we get on the bottom when we do 2 minus 2? 0, is that fixable if it's only 0 on the bottom? No, remember, when do you do more? When you get 0 in both spots. So if it's only 0 on the bottom, it would be D N E. And then I don't know if you remember, but we did this little, another silly little thing. It's okay to get 0 on the top cuz 0 divided by anything just gives you 0. But no, you can't get 0 on the bottom, that's when it's D N E. So if it's just a 0 on top, cool, the limit exists equal to 0. If the 0 is on the bottom, it's a D N E, but if it's both, then that's where you would try it. Okay? Alright, so that's one way to fix the limit, that's 0 over 0. The other one is L'Hopital's rule. So here's the rule, if you have the limit as x approaches some number a of f over g and it gives you 0 over 0, then that will be equal to the limit as x approaches a of both of the derivatives. Okay, that's L'Hopital's rule. So essentially, what you're gonna do is, you're gonna take the derivative of f and g and then you just try the limit again. Now, I am gonna put like a little condition on that. You can only use this when you get 0 over 0. Okay, if it's not 0 over 0, L'Hopital's rule is out the window, you're not okay, so take a look at number 4. We're plugging in e. So the first thing I would do is try to plug it in. I would have ln of e minus 1 over e minus, is that an e? Oh, e minus e. Okay, and then what happens when you ln e, do you remember? Cancels out 2, 1. Technically, what happens is your e is already to the first power. So then when you cross those out, it leaves a 1 behind. And then what's 1 minus 1 on top? Over 0, that means we can try to fix it. Okay, so let's do it. We know based on L'Hopital's rule that we can retry the limit as x approaches e if we take the derivative of the top and the bottom. Now, you're not doing a giant quotient rule. You're treating each of the derivatives separate. So what's the derivative of ln x minus 1? 1 over x, what about the minus 1? ln x goes to 1 over x, 1 as a constant goes to 0. Okay, on the bottom, I have x minus e. What's the derivative of x? And what's the derivative of e, which is a constant? 0. Okay, then from there, you're gonna take your x approaching e and you're just gonna try the limit again. So now on top, I have 1 over e and then that's divided by 1. Which is just gonna be what? Anything divided by 1, just stays the same. So it just still be 1 over okay? Now, most of the time, I'll say, when you get a limit like this, probably it's L'Hopital. They almost never give you 1, you just plug it in up or in and then you get the answer. Okay, uh, so let's try the next one. Let's just plug in 0 in our minds. 7 times 0 is 0, sine of 0 is 0. Top comes out to 0. Okay, then the bottom, I'd have 0 squared, sine of 0 is 0. All of that zeros out, that means I can use them. Okay, so L'Hopital's rule says this, I can retry the derivative if I take, I can retry the limit if I take the derivative of the top and the bottom. So we're gonna have x apply, approach 0 again. Look at just the top right down the der just the top. So 7x, what would that go to? 7, and then snow cone, snow cone? Uh huh, cuz I'm already on negative sine. And then I go down one more, that would be negative cosine, very good. Okay, now we're gonna take the derivative of the bottom. It's x squared sine 3x. So what's the derivative of x squared? 2x, and then what's the derivative of sine 3x? Sine goes to cosine, what happens to the 3x? Uh huh, it's, so the 3x stays the same, but then chain rule, you have to times by an extra 3, do you remember that? Okay, and then from there, we're just plugging in 0. So what is the cosine of 0 that I'm gonna use here and here? 1, so on top, I'll have 7 minus 1. And then on bottom, 2 times 0 is 0 plus 3 times 1. Because remember, cosine of 0 is 1, cosine of 3 times 0, that would still be the cosine of so then on the top, what would we get? 7 minus 1 is 6 over 3, which would be answer choice B, which is 2 right here. Um, yes? 3x, yeah. Uh huh. Do we just get that way? Uh huh. Alright, you finished, mom? Okay. So you always find, no, we don't use it that often. Um, are you talking about plugging in the 0?
Yeah.
So you would have, let me write it down here, you'd have 3 times the cosine of 3 times 0? Oh, sorry. And then what's 3 times 0? So then it'd be 3 times the cosine of 0. And then when you're at 0, remember, it's all your fingers on the top. So it comes out to 1, and then you do the 3 times the 1. Know what I mean? Hey, Ash, if you're gonna play games, we go back in the hallway game.
Oh, true.
Thanks. Okay, one more left like that, take a look at number 6. Okay, kinda weird, but look what they said. They're asking you to find the limit as x approaches 0 of f over g. And it's like, okay, well then oh, use my keys if you don't want. Okay. What if I can find them that are in them? As long as no one's in it, they'll be like in someone's personal. Um, okay, so I'm gonna plug in 0. And then what is it tell me f of 0? It's 0. What about when I plug in 0 to g, what am I gonna get? 0. So because it tells me right here, this information tells me that if I plug in 0 to f, I'm gonna get 0 on top. I plug in 0 to g, I'm gonna get a 0 on top. Well, then that's where you would say, okay, then we're ready to do but we are gonna keep L'Hopital's rule, that's exactly right. So if I can't work out this limit, then I'm gonna redo the limit with f prime over g prime. And then I'm like, wait, I don't know what f prime and g prime are, we'll look back in the question, they tell you what they are. What is the function for f prime? Okay, so then we wanna plug in 0 to cosine x. And then what is the function for g prime? It's just a 1, that's exactly right. So then where my g prime is in the equation, I'm gonna just put a 1 down here, and then I'm gonna try the limit again. Plug in your 0, what's the cosine of 0? 0, uh, that would be 1, and then 1 divided by 1 is 1. Uh huh. 0 is on the left, 0, I guess 2. Even 2, who is associated with 0? Yeah, basically, it's just saying they're both 0. So what this means is that f of 0 is 0 and g of 0 is 0. So basically, it's saying these are equal to each other and they're both equal to 0. All good? Remember it? Okay. Turn the page. Alright, indefinite limits, remember, you're using BOBO, bot, and then I think y'all's acronym was BETC when it was a different pre-pel teachers, never did. Okay, but BOBO, oh, this was a bottom. And then BETC. Okay, remember, you're only using BOBO, BETC for limits to infinity. So look at the first one, BOBO, Bot, or BETC, which one? It would be a uh huh, so it'd be a BETC, uh, so this is bigger on bottom. That's BOBO, uh huh, is 0. Bigger on top is none, that's bottom. And then BETC is when both powers are equal, then you divide the coefficient. Okay? So if it's bigger on bottom, you put 0, bigger on top, you put D N E, and because it's a limit, and then if it's both equal, you divide. So this would be and the reason it's a BETC is cuz it's an n squared on top and the highest power on bottom is n squared. So then divide the numbers in the front, what do you get? Alright, take a look at number 8. This one's factored out, doesn't matter, the rule's still the same. What is the highest power on top? If it's 2x minus 1 times 3 minus x, what degree? X squared, what about on bottom? Okay, then what type is it? It's a BETC, good job. But we need to know what the numbers are in the front, so let's multiply it. What is 2x times x? Okay, 2x squared. And then plus dot, 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 nobody cares. Okay, what about on the bottom? X times x 1x squared. And then when I divide those, plus dot, 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 what am I gonna get for my number in the front? Okay, 2 is wrong, think, what did we miss? Huh? Oh, okay. 2 times, they do x times 2x times perfect, look right here, pay attention to this detail. It's not 2x times x, it's 2x times minus x. And so if it's 2x times negative x, that's really a negative 2 on top. And so now, when I divide them, we get so just be careful for little details like that. Okay, next one, horizontal line y equals 2 is an asymptote, which the following must be true. Okay, let's draw, let's just remind ourselves what an asymptote is. Y equals 2 is what type of line, horizontal or vertical? Okay, so draw a horizontal line at 2. Okay, I'm gonna draw it with my high letter here, there's my asymptote. What does it mean for you to have a horizontal asymptote at 2? What happens on the graph? Yeah, at the end, it gets closer and closer and closer to 2. So I'm gonna do whatever I want in the middle, we'll say, and then I'm gonna curve off towards 2. I never get there. But I get closer and closer and closer. Okay, what do we mean when we say that? What is happening to x as I go towards this end? What is x approaching? Infinity, and what is my limit approaching? 2. So that's your definition, right? Okay, now, there are 2 ways you can asymptote, you can asymptote with x going towards positive infinity. Do you remember that your left side can also have an asymptote? So let's say, just for pretend, let's say that on the other side, your asymptote is going towards 0. Cuz remember, they don't have to be the same. So let's say on this side, that it was curving up towards 0. Well, then how would you change this limit statement? What would x be approaching? Huh? Negative infinity. Cuz remember, this is the right end behavior as my x goes to infinity. Well, then this would be the negative infinity. And then what did we say we're asymptoting towards on this side, just for fun? To be equal, let's see that. Because you're tracing your the x is the x value. So like, if I'm going this way, what's happening to my x's? They're getting smaller and smaller and smaller. I'd be like at 0, then negative 1, negative 2, negative 3, negative 4, cuz I'm on the x axis. Versus if I'm going forward, then my x's are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, cuz I'm tracing the graph out that way. Okay? Alright, uh, Ben, real quick, let's go over the definition for D right here. Here's what it says, this is choice D says this, the limit as x approaches 2 of f of x is infinity. Draw a picture and think about what that would what is x getting closer to? 2, and what are my y's getting closer to? Infinity, then that would be a vertical asymptote. Do you remember doing that? Where you would do like your line here. And then you would say, okay, as I approach 2 from the left, I'm going up to infinity. And then as I'm approaching from the other side, so this is the definition of a vertical asymptote. So if it's your y value shooting up to infinity, that's a vertical. But if it's your x that's going to infinity, then that would be a horizontal. Make sense? Alright, next, a little thing here. Okay, now we're gonna talk about differentiability. Here's what differentiability means. Okay, differentiability just means you can take the derivative. You can take the derivative anywhere that you can take a slope of a tangent line. So a function is continuous wherever it's connected. And a function is differentiable if it is smooth with no cusps, corners, vertical asymptotes, or discontinu okay, so continuous just means it's connected. Differentiable means I can draw a tangent line and then I can find the slope. So it says, uh, the graph, the function above, where is f continuous? But then not differentiable. It would be x. Because notice, it's connected, but it's a cut. So that would be continuous but not differential. And that's what we're looking for. Is it connected? Oh, we'll be staying with both. It's not connected, even though, now let's talk about B for a second, does the limit exist at B? It's not connected, even though, now let's talk about B for a second. Does the limit exist at B? The limit exists, but that's not the same as continuous. Continuous means it's connected. No, it can't be differentiable if it's. So, uh, I think we'll do a question. Yeah, we'll do an example of that in just a second. But remember, you can't draw. A tangent line if there's not a doctor. So I couldn't draw like a tangent. So graphically, continuous means connected, differentiable means smooth, no corners or. Okay, turn the page. Now let's talk about what if they give you an equation. Your steps for contin- uh, continuous or continuity are your Y value has to exist. And be defined. Your limits from the left and the right have to be the same. And then if you have a Y value and your limits match, then those two things have to also match each other. So the third step is that your Y value F of A has to equal whatever that limit is from the left and the right. Okay, then, for it to also be differentiable, remember, this just means connected. Continuous means connected, this one means no cusps or. To prove that there's none of that craziness going on in the graph, there are two steps. Step number one, your graph has to be continuous. So check, make sure it's continuous. If it's not, you don't go on. Okay, and then step number two is that the limits for the derivatives have to be the same. So your limit as X approaches A from the left. Has to equal the limit as you approach A from the right, but not on F, on its derivative. And then remember, the kind of annoying thing about if they put this on the previous ones, which they have a few times, you just have to remember to that. All right, so let's do this next one. So we have our equation, it's piecewise. We want to check if it's continuous. Okay, well then what do I do? Follow your steps exactly. Step number one, I'm gonna check for a Y value. I'm gonna check for a Y value. Now, where will I check for the Y? Will I plug it into the top or to the bottom? Why will I plug into the top? What does it have on it that the bottom doesn't have? So. For F of zero. I'm gonna plug into one minus. Two sine zero. What is the sine of zero? Zero. So then it'd be one minus two times zero. Which is just one minus zero, which is. So I have a Y value, perfect. Step number two. We have to make sure that our limits from the left and right hand sides are the same. Which limit do I already have? Okay, so think about if I have, if I already plugged in to the less than, that's the left. So I already know that for the Xs on the left of zero, where they're left than, I got one. Well, then I'm not gonna do that again. I see, I already did it right here. So then all that I need to do is plug into the right side. And remember, where are the Xs on the right side? They're all greater than zero. So then I'll do E to the negative four X, but I'll plug in, uh, zero. So that'd be E to the negative four times zero, which is just E to the zero, which is again. And then from there, if these match, your last step is to make sure that they also match your Y value. In this case, will that be true? Your Y value is one, your left and right limits were one, then is it continuous? Yeah, so we would say F of zero equals the limit. Check, it is. E to the one, because you have one slide, you know what I mean? Okay, now let's check. So we know, is it continuous? Yes, we did it. Now let's check differentiability. Okay, we already know it's continuous, so I'm just gonna put that here, continuous, check. Now we need to check the limits of the derivatives from the left. So I'm gonna come back up here to the top and I'm gonna now write a piecewise function for the derivative. So up here, I'm gonna put F prime equals. What is the derivative of the top function, one minus two sine? Zero. Uh huh, so minus two cosine X. And then what will the derivative of E to the negative four sine? It'd be E to the negative four sine X again, and then bring down the negative. So on the bottom, I would have E to the negative four X, but then times by minus four. And then what is my breakpoint that I'm plugging in on the left and the right? What number? Still zero. So plug in zero here, plug in zero here, and then see if they match. So they don't only have to match in the original, they have to match in the derivative for it to be. So let's do it. I'm gonna write the limit as X approaches zero of F prime from the left. And then I'm gonna plug in a zero to the top. So I'd have negative two times the cosine of X, which is now a zero. We know cosine of zero is one, so that came out to negative two. That is the slope on the left side. Okay, now let's do it from the right side, see if they're the same. So limit. X approached zero from the right side, you're putting a little plus, not of F, but of it. And then we're plugging into the bottom. So E to the negative four X would be what? Negative four times one, which is just negative. Four, and that would be the right side slope. Well then, are my slopes the same? No, then that means your graph is not differentiable. So therefore, not. You would not have to write that because you can just see that. Okay, and then remember, when we go through these definitions, like if the first part's not true, you wouldn't waste time checking the second part. Okay, same thing over here. If you don't have a Y value, don't even bother checking the limits because it can't be continuous without all of. Okay? All right, um, so why don't you look at that next one, see if it's true? Do this next one. Here's your, uh, limit, I kinda. There's your function. You have three statements. So think about if those are true on at the top. So let's test statement one. Where do you plug in two for your left side limit on top or bottom? For the left side, it should be the. Less than, right? So left side is a less than, so I'd plug in two here. I'd have the L N of four times two, what's that? Eight, and then eight minus seven would give me. One, and then do we know the L N of one? It's zero, but let's pretend you didn't. And now go to the second one. We're gonna plug in a two. Four times two is. Eight, and eight minus seven gives me. One. Okay, then the question is, are these the same or are they different? Okay, they are different, but you should know that the L N of one, zero. So then I would look at these and I would say, oh, my left and right limits aren't the same. Then question, can the graph be differentiable? Is that possible? Okay, no. So one is out, three is out. Okay, what answer choices does that eliminate? A is out because of the one, B is out because of the three, then D is out because. Then the only one left, these two has to be true, so let's check it. Okay, what is the derivative of? Four X minus seven. Notice I've set up a little F prime down here. Okay, so it'd be four. I'm gonna do that one first, just because it's easier. Okay, now let's think about what if I wanted to take the derivative of L N four X minus seven? Okay, we'll think about how do you take the derivative there? Okay, so it'd be one over U and then times U prime. So my U is four X minus seven. So one over U, but then I have to times by U prime. And so what's the derivative of my U if it was a four X minus seven? Times. Four. And now just plug in two to both of. Plug in a two here, what's four times two? Eight, and then eight minus seven is. One, but then what are we timesing by? And then what was the right side limit? So it is possible, remember what we said, it's possible. For us to meet condition number two, that the slopes are the same, but if it's not continuous, it still doesn't count as differentiable. So even though statement two is true, it doesn't matter because it wasn't continuous for it to be able to be differentiable. And then if you want to write the rule down here, remember, D D X of L N U. Is one over U times U prime. Or if you want to squeeze that into U prime over U, that's the one that I like better, uh, but they're the same. So when we did our L N of four X minus seven, it went to the bottom and then I had to times by four. Questions on that? All right, we only have a couple minutes left, so, oh, great, let's do this one. Okay, the next question says, we want to make it differentiable. It says, what are all values of A and B? So that F is differentiable. Well then, what has to be true if it's differentiable? It has to also be what? Okay, very good. So I'm gonna put, if it's differentiable. Then it's automatically also continued. Because remember, that's part of the definition. Well then, for your function to be continuous, the left and the right sides have to be equal. So I'm gonna put left equal to right. And then for it to be differentiable, what has to be equal? The left and right slope. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna put the derivative of the left. Needs to equal the derivative. Okay, which is kind of a weird way to. So for continuous, these have to be equal. For differentiable, their derivatives. So let's set up our equation. So what is, what number are we plugging in? What's our breakpoint? Two, so I'm gonna plug that in here. So I have X plus two B needs to equal A X squared when X is two. Now let's take our derivative. What's the derivative of X plus two B? Derivative of X is one, what about the two B? It is zero, B is what's B, what kind of number? B is a constant. So remember, even though it's a letter, if it's a constant, the derivative still goes. Yeah, so X is gonna give me a one. But you're right, B will go. Okay, then on the other side, times the two down to the front, what's my number in the front now? Two A, and then what happens to the X? I knock it down one power, so now it's just two A. And then remember, your breakpoint is the same when X equals two. And then really, you could pick either equation to plug into first. So let's just pick this one. Plug in your two. I have one equals two A times two. Well then, one equals four A. Then divide the four across, that means that A is equal to. So at this point, we can at least eliminate two of these. But the first three answer choices all have your fourth. So now let's check the second one. So we're still plugging in two. So I have X is two plus two B. Equals, what was my A that I can go ahead and plug in? One fourth, and then my X again would be two. So I have two plus two B equals, two plus two B equals, two squared is four. But then divide it by four, what is that side equal to? One. Next step, what do we do? Yep, subtracts that two across. One minus two is. Negative one, and then divide by two. And my B is minus. Uh, last one, let's just do this one. Okay, two from the left, what would it be? Two from the left, what would it be? Actually, there's no numbers on it, so let's mark it. We'll say this is one, two. What would that be? What would it be with a plus on the other side? One. And then what would it be at two? The N E, remember, those left and rights have to be the same. Um, then what would we put for zero from the left? Cover up the right side. Is there anything over there? And then B D N, because you're past the end of the graph. What about zero from the right side then? One, then can this limit exist if the left side limit doesn't exist? Okay, that would be D N. Then I'm gonna put, because no left side. To match with the right side. Okay, then last one, what about five from the left? What would we put for here's five? It doesn't touch it, it just goes up forever and ever and ever, so what would we put? Not, well, okay, you could put D N E, but more specifically, which way is it going? Going up towards what? Do you remember that you can set it equal to infinity? Do you remember that you can set it equal to infinity? Because you could say like, oh, not only does it not exist, the direction that it's pointing versus if it were asymptoting down, then you would just switch that to a negative. Good job. All right, if you guys have your sheets, I'll sign up. Oh, nice. Bye, have a good day. Yes? Um, I can't quite hear you. What'd you say? Yes. Uh huh. Don't get it for your name. Bye, y'all. Have a good day.